The American Association of University Women advances gender equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, and research with a special focus on pay equity leading to economic security. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan political organization open to all citizens, both men and women. It is committed to inform and active participation of citizens in government. Neither organization supports nor opposes any candidates. Thank you for watching this forum brought to you by the AAUW, League of Women Voters, and Midland Community TV.
Welcome to the 2020 School Board Candidate Forum for the Midland Public Schools, co-sponsored by the Midland Branch of the American Association of University Women and the Midland Area League of Women Voters. The American Association of University Women advances gender equality for women and girls through advocacy, education, and research with a special focus on pay equality leading to economic security. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan political organization open to all citizens, both men and women. It is committed to the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Neither organization supports nor opposes candidates. I am Judith Cox of the Midland Branch of the American Association of University Women, commonly called by its acronym AAUW, and I will serve as moderator tonight. Jane Worth, member of both AAUW and the League of Women Voters, will be our official timekeeper. This is one of two forums for the Midland Public School Board candidates. Look for a second forum with the four candidates vying for two four-year positions. Tonight, we are pleased to meet and hear from three candidates vying for two six-year positions on the Midland Public School Board. I want to welcome the candidates Brad Blazy, Scott McFarland, and Tiffany Turein. We hope that what you see and hear will help you decide how to vote in the upcoming election on Tuesday, November 3rd. Each of the candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. After I'll have spoken, I will pose a series of questions. Candidates will be allotted a 90-second response. At the request of any candidate, I will repeat the question on the floor. As each candidate responds, our timer will raise a warning card, and we will stop at that time. When time is up, I will stop the speaker, allowing only the completion of a sentence. After the question and answer period, each candidate may give a one-minute closing statement. The candidates participate in a drawing to determine the order in which they will speak. That order will be maintained and rotated throughout the program. So now we will begin the opening statements. Again, each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and give a brief overview of their qualifications and reasons for running. Scott McFarland, you have been selected to go first. You have the floor for two minutes.
Thank you, Judith, and thank you to the AAUW for hosting us tonight. My name is Scott McFarland. I'm a Midland resident of nearly 11 years. I am married to my beautiful wife Carla. We have four children, all of whom attend Midland Public Schools. And most of you know me, I'm the president of the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, and I've been a member of the Board of Education for eight years. During that time, I've served in other officer capacities such as the Board Secretary and Board Vice President, in addition to chairing several committees. I'm running for reelection because I want to continue to push MPS to become a learning environment that is safe, collaborative, inclusive, diverse, and equitable. Since being elected eight years ago, we've done a number of really neat things. We've slowed a decade of declining student enrollment through innovative programming and customer service. We are closing the achievement gap. We have been adding to the general fund every year for the last five years, making our financial position the best that it's ever been. We have applied for and received over $3 million in grants, which helped create our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, a K-12 STEM curriculum, school safety protocols, and student emotional wellness initiatives. I want to make sure that MPS continues to evolve in its delivery of education. The DEI initiatives that we adopted are bold, challenging, and long overdue, and they are going to change the face of Midland Public Schools. And I want to make sure that the transparency, the open dialogue, and the application of these initiatives continues. But all of that said, I'm running because I love doing this. I'm passionate about our district, I'm passionate about our teachers, and I'm passionate about our students. It is simply in the fabric of who I am. I'm an experienced leader with a deep-rooted history in Midland Public Schools, and if reelected, I'm going to continue walking hand-in-hand with our teachers and administrators.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland.
Thank you.
Tiffany Turein, you may now introduce yourself.
Thank you, Judith. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes. Okay, thank you. So thank you again to the Midland Branch of the AAUW and the Midland Area League of Women Voters. I am Tiffany Turein, and my husband James and I have been residents with our children in Midland for almost 10 years, and we are parents of two Midland Public Schools students. And for us, our passion, our work, everything that we do is to see that our children thrive as well as children in the Midland community. While I believe that the MPS Board has been doing a stellar job, especially with what we're doing now with the different modes of education, I feel that we can improve in areas of safety, equity, and transparency. I think that my passion, my experience, and my qualifications would add a needed voice to the important conversations that are impacting our children and families at this time. Now, more than ever, the best interest of our children and the greater Midland community should be taken into consideration as the Board decides these issues of safety and equity. I have a Juris Doctorate degree. I have attended two historically Black universities and colleges. I have a Master of Law degree in employee benefits. In addition to that, my legal background, my work experience, and my passion for serving the community is why I believe I will be a great addition to the Board of Education. I currently manage benefits at the Dow Chemical Company and believe that that experience, in addition to those aforementioned, will be a needed asset to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Turein. Brad Blazy, you may now introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Brad Blazy. I am a third-generation Midlander, raising the fourth generation. I'm married to my beautiful wife Belinda of 18 years. We have two boys, Benjamin and Baylen. Most of my time when I am not working or doing school board is spent coaching, either coaching football, hockey, flag football, golf, or whatever my boys are interested in doing. I'm the president and owner of Blazy Electric, a family-owned business that was established in 1965. My father started it when he was 22 years old, and I have recently taken that over in the past couple of years. I have 24 years of experience working here at Blazy Electric, so lots of construction and service, as well as all the dynamics of owning your own business and being involved in insurance and also in everything that goes along with that. I have been on multiple boards in my lifetime. I've spent 16 years on the Associated Builders and Contractors Board. I spent 16 years at the Greater Mission Construction Academy Board, and then also eight years on a Health Trust Board, which is fascinating, learning the intricacies of the insurance and health insurance world. I've also been on Midland Public School Board for the last four years. I won't go into the statistics that Mr. McFarland already shared with you, which are all phenomenal. We are on the right path, that is for sure. And I also want to acknowledge that we have a huge curveball that's come our way with this pandemic and our change in learning, and I really want to do another six years of helping Midland Public Schools because I'm very passionate about the kids, and that is the one reason why I'm here. And I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blazy. Thank you, everyone. We will now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question, and I will repeat the question at the request of the candidate. For the first question, we will begin with Tiffany. What are your views regarding a safe return to schools for students and staff, and what basis would you use to determine the need to move to a distance-learning-only module?
Well, thanks again, Judith, for that question. As I mentioned, I believe that safety is one of my biggest priorities if I became a member of the Board to address what should be considered in going to an all-virtual model. First and foremost, with everything we do, it should be in the best interest of the children. That means having safe precautions with entering and exiting schools, and when the data shows that that is no longer sufficient, then we should by all means move to an all-virtual model. All-virtual, in my opinion, would also include having assistance from teachers versus a platform where students are self-learning without the benefit and input from their teachers. Data, first and foremost, in my opinion, should be what we observe to make those tough decisions. Again, I commend the Board for its decision to allow multiple models in educating our children during this very unique time. However, we should continue to evaluate that decision, and that includes exploring the existing data. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, it's your turn to answer.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. What are your views regarding a safe return to schools for students and staff, and what basis would you use to determine the need to move to a distance-learning-only module?
Obviously, safety of the children is a number-one priority for this Board and the administration of the Midland Public Schools. If we were to move away from the current model that we have right now of being able to go face-to-face and going to full virtual, that would be based solely on, not solely, but very heavily on the data. Our superintendent is working hand-in-hand with the health professionals and getting that data and monitoring that on a daily basis. If we have that uptick and that we need to do a virtual for the safety of the children, this Board, myself, and/or the administration, will not hesitate to go back to a virtual setting if that is what's needed. We've worked very hard, hired additional teachers. We have a new format for teaching. It's obviously the best educational model, in my opinion. It's going to be face-to-face, and I'd love to stay face-to-face as much as possible. But if the data says go virtual, we will go virtual.
Thank you. Scott, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Going last, I suspect between Brad and I, you're going to hear a lot of repeated information. Safety is paramount. It is to me, I know it is to Brad, I know it is to our Board and our administrators as well. We actually have a model system that's being replicated throughout the state, and our district is contacted daily, wondering how we have been so successful thus far. Especially the local districts are in continual contact with our administration, and we are in contact, not at a Board level, but the administrators are communicating daily, and this is all data-driven. They are communicating daily with state and local health officials, relying on information from the CDC. Our implementation, our safety measures are pretty sound. We have scanning before you get into a building, before you go in on a bus. There are mask breaks for the kids that have to wear masks all day, which, by the way, has not been presented itself as a large problem thus far. If there is an uptick, and we suspect there will be, it'll be reevaluated at that point. And like Brad said, the Board will not hesitate for 10 seconds to go back into a virtual world if that's necessary. We're offering the training for the teachers. We've hired 20 additional teachers for virtual learning, and they are working with the Canvas system so that transition can actually be seamless when and if it becomes necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the second question, we will begin with Brad. Earlier this summer, over 1,000 students, alum, and community members signed a petition asking that MPS do more to incorporate lessons of systematic racism, privilege, and American history from the Black experience into the ongoing curriculum. What do you think MPS should do in response to this petition, and what changes would you like to see MPS make in response? Brad, we can't hear you.
I apologize. Judy, are you speaking of the petition that we received from the anti-racist Midland group, the ARM group?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So we systematically have gone through that, all of their requests, and as a Board, we have gone through that systematically, to every single one of their requests. We have done workshops with Dr. Beasley to make sure that we are addressing all of their concerns. Their concerns are the concerns of many people throughout the community, and I commend them for bringing that forward, bringing it to our attention, and bringing it for action. It was well thought out, and a lot of those items, we were able to address in our resolution, and it is our plan forward to incorporate the DEI and that resolution into every aspect of the Board, whether it be committee level, at every level of the Board that is on the forefront and addressed at every meeting. Those young people that put that together and came together to do that were phenomenal. The recently removed from Midland Public Schools, some of the college kids, absolutely phenomenal, and I appreciate what they did, and I'm happy to say that I live next door to a couple of them and was able to speak with them multiple times. And fantastic young people, and thank you.
Thank you. Scott, it's your turn.
So as I mentioned, we've taken a pretty bold step forward with our DEI initiatives, and Brad's exactly right. I had a chance to sit down with ARM in a meeting with one of our other Board members and really sit down for a couple hours and hash out issues. Some of the steps we've taken, we've created an entire new vision statement that we created hand-in-hand with ARM, with our administrators, with our community stakeholders. Everybody had input on this. So we adopted a vision statement. We adopted a proclamation on August 3rd. It is called "The Resolution to Change the System: Eliminate Racism and Create a More Equitable and Inclusive School for All." It is a very powerful document. Like Brad mentioned, it's got a number of checklist items within that document that we have gone through and completed or in the process of implementing. And I can tell you, DEI as a concept and as an initiative has been incorporated into everything that we do, every meeting, from the Board level right on down through administration into the classroom. So we've got to do things like invest in a DEI leader. Once Amy Beasley leaves in January, we are going to perform equity audits. We are going to invest heavily in teacher and paraprofessional development. The administrators are going to complete a book study. The Board members and administrators have committed to ongoing DEI workshops. I mean, the fact is, we're ignorant. We can't be ignorant anymore. We've got to get better, and we are certainly working forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany, it is now your turn to answer.
Thank you, Judith. So I agree with these Board members, again, in some of the ARM initiatives that have been incorporated into the DEI plan. I believe it is comprehensive and encompassing of the petition, as well as the needs and the thoughts of the Midland community, as it includes the culture, value, well-being, education, and advocacy, as well as internal and external communication, training, and hiring. That we lead with respect, trust, and courage. That we ensure an equitable, collaborative, and inclusive culture must not only be a mission. I believe it should be shown in the actions of the Board members inside and outside of the Boardroom, and as you know, leadership comes from the top down. So once our members, our superintendent, our leadership displays the mission that it has adopted from this DEI initiative, I believe that the petitioners of ARM, as well as the community at large, will be served and will benefit from these initiatives. As I mentioned, I'm a product of HBCUs, and I believe that hiring, looking abroad for bringing in diverse talents, as well as the curriculum that Mr. McFarland mentioned, will go a long way in meeting the needs of our diverse community.
Thank you. For the third question, Scott will answer first. Scott, what, in your opinion, is the relationship of the school board members to the superintendent?
In my opinion, that is one of the principal functions of a Board member, of a Board in general, is to hire our sole employee, that is Mike Sherrill, whoever the sitting superintendent is. So our relationship with him is he is our one employee. We focus our energy and communication through him, and he disseminates whatever it is policies that the Board decides to implement. He is our eyes and ears for a large part in dealing with the district. Of course, you know, we have children in the district, and so we see teachers, and I see teachers on a daily basis in both Seabird Elementary and Jefferson Middle School. So I do get feedback from them as well, but you know, as a Board member, I try and limit my engagement with teachers and with administrators because they are not employed technically by the Board. The Board does employ one individual, and that is our superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tiffany, you may now answer.
Thank you, Judith. So I will echo Mr. McFarland's sentiments in relation to hiring of the superintendent, but I will take that a step further. As a Board member, it is our role, and the Board member's role, that we make sure we enforce the policies along with the superintendent, that we serve as a collective voice. I have been most successful in life and in my career where I have worked collaboratively with management in different environments as a Board member of various organizations. And then when you acknowledge all opinions, ensure that they are valid and backed up, again, by data and information. So as we take it and listen to the voices of the teachers, of the communities, and hopefully some of the organizations that I will help to bring about, I believe that our goal is to look for a win-win situation and not just compromise where we believe there's a case of hurt feelings. Again, I think that the best interest of the children should always be our guiding principle, and the best way to maintain a successful Board is that we work collaboratively, but know that we should be able to voice our concerns and be transparent when necessary.
Thank you. Brad, you now have the floor.
Thank you. I have to agree with both of their answers. As Scott said, and as Tiffany said, Superintendent Sherrill or the superintendent is the sole employee of the Board of Education. I've also had the pleasure, as Scott mentioned, we serve on different committees over the years, and for the past couple of years, I've been heavily involved with the bylaws of the district and learned a lot about some of the intricacies of our bylaws. And in those bylaws, it does say that the actual entire district, including all teachers, buildings, everything, is under the ownership of the Board. And the Board being made up as seven individuals working as one voice, so yes, we have the one employee, but we are also ultimately responsible for ownership of the entire district. With that being said, these seven people have seven different opinions, but they have to work collaboratively together. They can agree to disagree, but when it comes down to the end, they need to agree as a majority and move forward. Working hand-in-hand with the superintendent, obviously, as Scott said, he's our eyes and ears, and we have to have blind faith in those things that he is responsible for, and it has to be a very workable relationship between the Board and the superintendent and his team. Thank you.
Thank you. For the fourth question, Tiffany will go first. Tiffany, as a possible Board member, how would you advocate for the additional resources that schools will need to not only address the costs associated with the coronavirus, but also the resources that were needed before the pandemic?
Thanks again, Judith. So I hate to sound like a broken record, but as an attorney, you learn freshman year that the best interest of the children should always be primary when you're making decisions such as these. This is uniquely applicable to the school board and as it comes to funding. In making decisions that add to or increase our resources where needed, we will look to the state funding that's available, as well as bonds, local grant opportunities, as well as budgets with monies within our own budget, where we have a need, if necessary, to make cuts. With the pandemic, there's been, I guess, a monkey wrench, if you will, that was not anticipated. So you look to what is absolutely necessary to continue to enforce the curriculum, payment of teachers, ensuring that resources are there, and again, making sure that our schools and our facilities are safe for our children. Those are the priorities that we should look to if, indeed, budget cuts and resources are not available.
Thank you. Brad, you may now answer the question.
As Scott mentioned before, we have established phenomenal reserves over the past couple of years for Midland Public Schools. But the sad part is, the ripple effect of coronavirus and what it has done has affected Midland Public Schools as well. As HIV changed the medical field, so has the coronavirus changed everything about life that we know it right now, including the finances of schools. So this great financial position that we are in, well, that is coming into play as we speak today. We've had to spend some of that money. Our budget forecast of what we're looking forward to right now is having to use some of that money. It's a hot button for me. It's something that I'm passionate about. Proposal A was established in 1994. That is when we started being more dependent, or 100% dependent, really, on our money that chain, which is determined by the state and our student count. We still, today, 26 years later, still depend on that student count. We talked about it as a Board. Mike talks about Count Day and how that affects us, and the actual dollar amount that we get determined from the state is a big part of our budget. I would love to work with the employer, the businesses in the area, the foundations in the area. I would love to establish more streams of revenue and not just focus or limit our educational experience based on what the state is going to give us back in our student count. I'd like that to be better.
Thank you. Scott, you now have the floor.
So we've been saving up for this for eight years now, since I've been on the Board. In 2014, we had a 6% fund balance. We now have a fund balance just over 30%. We can weather the foreseeable pandemic with ease, at least for the next year. When I say with ease, no cuts to curriculum, no cuts to employee benefits or staffing. We have the funds in place, and this is the rainy day we've been saving for. We have several streams of revenue. We've got money from the CARES Act. We've gotten over $3 million in grants and gifts, foundational allowances, state and federal. There are local foundations that incorporate partners that we work with all the time, and we have a lot of our own money, both in our operating fund and our general fund, to pay for things that we need. We're going to spend $4 million this year on PPE to keep our students and our teachers safe. And like I said earlier on, we have been a model district for people for other districts. They want to emulate what we're doing. They may not necessarily have the resources, so they're struggling with that, but right now, we're doing it right. So as far as funding goes, there has to be multiple streams. We are pursuing those, and I think we're doing a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question goes to Brad to start. Brad, how would you approach working with the different employee groups and eliciting their input before Brad, how would you approach working with the different employee groups and eliciting their input before making policy decisions?
Well, as we talked before, I am not directly working hand in hand with the employee groups. That is more of the responsibility of the administration. But if we had a task force and that they were engaged in part of a task force along with the board, be happy to work with them and get feedback from them and get information. Obviously, the employee groups are on the front line. They have the experience. They know the day to day. Their input and, and opinions would be invaluable. But there would have to be some kind of a task force or a committee put together because as I said before, we don't have daily interaction, uh, we hardly have any interaction with them. That is the responsibility of the administration.
Thank you. Scott, you may now answer the question.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right. Um, the board, it is not the job of the board to deal directly with the different workgroups. Um, it just creates a lot of animosity between workgroups and perhaps confusion with administrators a, and, and the board members. Um, so that, that's set up that way for a reason. But, uh, you know, when we, when we do get our briefings on negotiations, for example, um, it is important that we all keep an open mind and try and step out of the role of maybe a board member and see where they're coming from and, and collaboration, transparency, open communication, uh, those are all keys and those are all things that I would expect um, from my administrators when they're dealing with different workgroups. Uh, we have to be fair. We have to treat people equitably. We have to treat them respectfully and we have to make sure that, uh, as I've always said, children, students are paramount in every single decision that we make.
Thank you. Thank you. Tiffany, you now have the floor.
So just to, um, echo what the gentleman had said, um, it may not be a direct role of the board member to, um, interface with these groups. But I do believe that utilizing parent, teacher, student, community advisory councils, if you will, to help problem solve, um, and to practice transparency should be a key practice as a board member, um, even if informally. Um, for me, one of the key benefits of my being active and engaged in the Midland community is getting the chance to know my neighbors. I work with them. I serve with them. I cheer them on at our football games. I actually met, uh, Mr. Blazey's wife at a football game, uh, this past weekend. So for me, that is the opportunity to get to know what is going on with our schools. What are your thoughts? What are your concerns? I meet teachers. I meet leaders. So well, why not? While not a, a formal means of engaging, I do believe we should take every opportunity, volunteering in the schools, participating in the read-ins, serving, uh, where we can, just so that the community, the schools can see that we're there and that we care about their voices and about their input.
Thank you. This is the final question of the night and Scott will answer first. Scott, in these uncertain times, how do you propose that Midland Public Schools retain and attract talented teachers and staff?
I, I think we've done a decent job of that. I, I think, I really believe our, our DEI initiative is going to help a lot with that. Um, you know, we are, I want us to be a very diverse group, a very, we have, we have talented teachers. I mean, we are ranked amongst the top in the country. Our, our high schools are both amongst the top 6% nationwide. Um, and I believe Midland Public Schools was the top 4% of the state. Uh, so we have to keep performing academically. We have to be able to compensate our teachers well. Uh, we have to be able to provide them the tools that they need to deliver the education in the manner which we want it delivered. Uh, and, and that is a, a forward-thinking vision. Um, but you know, that's, that's what we're here to do. We're here to be stewards of public trust. We are here to develop and to approve policies that are going to attract kids and make us a magnet district. So through our innovative programming, through our innovative hiring, through changing hiring practices to broaden the, the, the net that we're casting to go to other colleges that we typically wouldn't go to or that our, that our recruiters rather wouldn't go to. Uh, there are a lot of things that we can do to, to draw talent and to retain talent.
Thank you. Tiffany, you may now answer the question.
Judith, with you, repeat the question for you, please.
Absolutely. In these uncertain times, how do you propose that Midland Public Schools retain and attract talented teachers and staff?
Thank you. So kudos to the district because we do have some of the best teachers in Midland Public Schools. Um, my children's teachers are, are prime examples. In order to attract and retain, I believe first and foremost, we recruit locally as well as outside of our region to bring talent into, uh, Midland Public Schools. As I mentioned, I'm a product of HBCUs and they turn out some of the finest educators, um, some of whom are in one of our Midland Public Schools. I think that you also, um, sell them on, if you will, the beauty of Midland. The Midland that has kept my family and I here for nearly 10 years. I think, um, investigating or, um, instituting a repayment of student loan program would be another initiative to bring teachers into the district as well as providing mentorship, um, somewhat of a buddy system with local organizations as well as local businesses such as, uh, the Dow Chemical Company and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, you may now answer.
Uh, attract and retain? I think I'll start with retain. Um, as the other candidate said, we have some of the best teachers in the country. That is not a secret to anyone. To retain them, we need to give them the resources that they need. We need to have competitive pay. They need to have all of the support that we can possibly give them as a district so that they are successful. Especially in these trying times, we need to make sure that, uh, their needs are answered so that they can be successful, uh, in the classroom as well as virtually. We need to make sure that we have continuing education for them, that we give them what they need to stay on top of their game with all of the cutting edge things that we can offer to them, including technology classes, whatever it may be. Attract, we've done a great job on that. We've got ahead of the curve because there aren't as many teachers graduating as there used to be. So we have branched out and we started recruiting earlier in the process, going to job fairs and to other universities and branching out is, and we can branch out further. We have to attract the best of the best. That's what we expect. That's what we have here. And that's the only thing that we should accept here. And obviously, we can go further out and get even, uh, more teachers from other areas than what we have done in the past and welcome them to our team.
Thank you. This concludes the time available for questions. Thank you to all of you for your thoughtful responses. Now we've come to our one-minute closing statements. At this time, you may wish to address any of the questions or your comments to wrap up your positions and opinions on the various aspects of serving on the board for the Midland Public Schools. For the closing statements, we will begin with Tiffany.
Time flies when you're having fun. Thank you again, Midland Branch of AAUW to the Midland Area, Area League of Women Voters. Um, I would just like to close by reiterating, um, how I started. Um, I'm a parent of two Midland Public School students and I pray regularly that my children thrive as all children in Midland Public Schools thrive. I want to see all children receive the benefits of an education, a door-opening education as my husband and I have. As I mentioned earlier, I believe my education, my professional experience would be a welcome addition to the board. Additionally, I'd just like to share that arriving in Midland 10 years ago, I joined with local organizations who have provided thousands of dollars to the community to support the needs of children. I will continue to use my passion, my experience and my voice to make sure again that all children in Midland Public Schools succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, you now have the floor.
I'd also like to thank the AAUW and the League of Women Voters, um, for having this forum. I've really enjoyed the last four years being on the Public Schools Board of Education. Um, I've learned a ton. I've been very intimate with the bylaws, learning about the budgets, uh, being involved in committees. I feel that I would be a very valuable asset to the Board of Education because of the knowledge, uh, and, uh, the work that I've put into it this past four years. I'd like to be on the board for another six years. That's why I'm running. I also would like to see the completion of this 122.5 million dollar bond investment into our district. And we also have to start talking about the possibility of another bond, uh, in this next six-year term. And I think that I'm a great candidate to help the Midland Public Schools with that. And the reason I'm doing this is for the kids and I really appreciate you having us. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. Um, I am the current school board president and I have been a board member now for eight years. And I think given our challenging times, uh, we are going to need some veteran board leadership and some experienced leaders on the board who have, uh, kind of weathered storms in the past and kind of know where we're going. So my commitment to you is this, I will continue to lead this board with respect, trust and courage. I will continue to be a steward of public trust and I will do my very best to ensure that MPS develops and continues to foster a learning environment that is collaborative, inclusive, diverse and equitable. True to the MPS vision statement that we created, I will work tirelessly to ensure MPS remains a district where all of our students can achieve success. Thank you again so much for having me tonight. My name is Scott McFarland and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum this evening. Our thanks to board candidates Brad Blazey, Scott McFarland and Tiffany Turain for participating in this forum. The Midland Branch of AAUW and the Midland Area League of Women Voters appreciate that you have given voters an opportunity to hear your conversations about issues facing Midland Public Schools. Please watch for our next forum with the four candidates vying for two four-year positions. Voters, I remind you once again that the election is on Tuesday, November 3rd. We would also like to extend a very special thank you to the people who have made this program possible, including the MCTV staff and Catherine Redwine. Also, thanks to the AAUW Midland Branch members Jody Gardner, Suzanne Ostahousky and Carol Swineheart and Catherine Redwine from the Midland League of Women Voters and Kim Stanky, Terri Townley and Jane Worth, who are members of both organizations. Please pass the word to your friends and neighbors that our votes, that your votes are important. Thank you for watching. Please remember this motto, "It's my vote, I will be heard." Good evening.